I don't know if he wants to be first, right?
Come on, Carol, you were always first anyhow.
All right, well, how about we start with a gentleman, and if ladies want to jump up. Yes, sir. Could you state your name and I would take it for the record?
Mr. Chairman, my name is David Gordon, and I'm attorney representing the members of the Shaft Road project. Very quickly, I have three points I'd like to make on the project in subdivision approval. First is a general point. It was reported in the local news, I think over the last week, that the town has discovered that the planning board has never been properly authorized by the town board. There's no record of any authorization of this board. And in fact, we understand from the news reports that the attorney, Mr. Brennan, is in the process of drafting legislation to authorize the board. And therefore, the short message is, this board does not sit with any authority, and what you're doing now is not authorized by law, and therefore, you shouldn't be doing it. Obviously, since you have counsel here, he can describe it more detail, but the bottom line is, the town has to go back and fix its authorization, and not authorized, it shouldn't be happening, and you should stop. Assuming that we move on with the details, I do want to make a comment about, you look quizz-- do you have a question on that? You look like you're quizzing on it. On Lot 10, all of your technical consultants, the ECC, your own consultant, have recommended that Lot 10 not be developed. And the reason why is because it's in the town conservation area, it's in the, it's sort of called the, you know, the wildlife corridor. When this board originally discussed that issue, there was a lot of confusion, it took a lot of time, and there was a lot of talking past each other. And ultimately, you decided on that particular evening that it wasn't an issue, and then at the next meeting, technically, it came up again, and you know as it was an issue, that the lot actually was impacting the corridor, and by that point, you'd already made your previous decision. And for better or for worse, those decisions led up to your SEACER review and your neglect. But now it's subdivision approval time, and you should go back and rethink that. Because you now know, it was confirmed actually during that subsequent meeting, that this is in the wildlife corridor, and it's been recommended to you by the ECC and by your own consultant that it be preserved as part of the conservation area. And that's what you ought to do here. Because that would, in fact, if you look at the language of the reports, I think your own consultant said that it's the most significant contribution that can be made for meeting the open space holes. And so, this isn't, you know, the sort of thing that's going to completely change the project, it's simply saying that the one lot that's all the way in the corner, that you're extending that road all the way down there to, that's actually in the conservation area, should not be developed and should be preserved. And so, that's the short message. It's already in documentation, I know you've already discussed it for a long period of time, but the truth is that the discussions didn't really get productive until the next subsequent meeting, when you find out what was really going on. You should correct it now at this stage. The third point is on the conservation easement. There's been a lot of discussion as to who's going to hold the easement. There's a real question as to whether the town has the capacity to hold the easement and to enforce it. And we would urge the planning board to require the easement to be held by a private conservation organization such as the Walco Valley Land Trust, and to have that easement funded by the applicant. That way, the town and the building inspector don't have to take on a whole new task that they're not really cut out for, and that the agencies that are cut out for it can be doing it. Thank you.
Thank you. Do you want to make a comment? Anybody else in public that would like to speak? Your family?
I'm Lisa Lunsley from Brunswick Road. I'd like to reiterate two of the comments that Dave Gordon made, which are both explained really well in the memo from the Gardener ECC, that Lot 10 is in an environmentally sensitive area. It's located in the Shonggum Kill South Conservation Hub. The driveway to Lot 10 would have a negative impact on the environment. Eliminating Lot 10 would have a positive impact, maintaining an unfragmented open space area which would contribute to habitat, biodiversity, aquifer recharge, and wildlife connectivity. The ECC also recommends specifying the mechanism by which the conservation easement will be monitored, including the possibility of a partnership with an external conservation organization, as Dave said. I also would like to raise a process and transparency question, which is, or issue, that is, the bulk of the planning board's debate on this project's compliance with SEACER occurred in a secret meeting where no members of the public were present, and no minutes or recording have been made available to the public. And I think that that's a big flaw in the process that was followed to give the negative declaration on this project.
Could you remind me again what you just stated there with respect to the minutes that you were asking for that would never make public? What date were you asking for?
The meeting, the workshop meeting where the planning board withdrew the points for the SEACER.
Right. So, I've spoken to numerous people about this issue, and I'll state it clearly and loudly and clearly. That was a meeting that Donna, our clerk, was not in attendance. We had a tape recording that was, that did not record any part of the meeting. We've stated that numerous times, I'm stating that clear, loud and clear right now. We do not have any, we did not capture any minutes of that entire meeting.
No recorded?
No recorded minutes of that meeting. We have pieced together from ourselves minutes that we are, that we have drafted here, and that we're trying to piece together and approve tonight. They will be made available, they're in draft form now, they'll be made, they're available at any time that you would like to get them from here on out after tonight, after we review them. So, again, for the record, there was no tape recording of that meeting.
That's not what, that's not what we were told, that's not what I was told when I raised the issue in a town board meeting.
Again, you probably should come right directly to the heart of the question, which is, come right up, and I'm responding to you now publicly, that there is no, again, I'll repeat, we do not have a recording of that meeting, clear.
So, it would be really helpful for the public to be able to review that meeting before making comments in a public hearing.
Excuse me?
It would be really helpful as a member of the public to be able to review what was said at that meeting and the analysis that the planning board did before making comments at a public hearing.
It was a public meeting, it was notified in paper, and you were watching to attend.
It's right here in this room.
You could have come right in this room and--
Yeah, I don't subscribe to the Middletown newspaper.
Well, again, that's not, see, this is something that's done--
You know, nothing was sent out to the email list for people who sign up for planning board emails.
Well, again--
You follow the letter of the law. I'm not accusing you of violating the letter of the law.
Thank you for your communications. Anybody else?
Yeah.
State your name, live and clear for the record.
Shane Hayden. You know, it's great to sit here and listen to you talk about the letter of the law. I'm more curious about who you work for, who do you, who are you accountable to for the decisions you make that affect our community? It's great that you follow the law, and everybody can have the discussion, and we can pay for lawyers, but in the end of the day, why are we here? Why are we in this community? And who is supporting, really, all of the building that's going on? Now, I'm not taking, I don't want to take away anybody's livelihood, I don't want to say anyone shouldn't be able to make a living, but frankly, if you look around what's happening in our community, in this community, the ones surrounding us, it's a beautiful area, every available lot is getting built with a, you know, split-level ranch home, and is frankly taking away from the original reason why many of us are here. Now, this is a philosophical issue, I'm not going to argue you on points of law, because I haven't studied the specific issues, but I do question the intent of the planning board and what it is that you want to make this community out of about. What are you planning for? Are you planning, or are you rubber stamping? Do you ever look at what you're leaving behind you? Or are you just going to say, yeah, okay, anybody come in here, build whatever you want, and to hell with it all? Because that's what's going to happen. It's happened in New Jersey, it's happened everywhere around us. You see it. And who really likes it? But then some people get their money, and they get out, and nobody really cares. It's the reality. It's the reality. Where is the developer for this property from? Is he from here? I asked this in the last meeting. Where's he from? You know what, he bought a property, it's his right, God give him, you know, whatever. And whomever was selling it, I wish I had the money to be able to buy it myself, and this would not be an issue, but I didn't, so I did not do that. And who is financing this? Are they from here? Is it Ulster Savings, Roundout, one of these guys? I only have to say that your silence must be acquiescence, because something that I'm saying is striking the truth.
No, it's not a dialogue. You speak, we listen.
Oh, okay, well, you, okay, well--
Got it?
Then I'm a little into this.
Yeah.
But I would not mind hearing, like, okay, refute what I have to say.
It doesn't work that way.
Let's not, let's not start from--
Mr. Downs, why don't you just--
We're looking--
Just say--
That's why--
He would, that's a dialogue, that's like, I'm fine with it. I'm the one, I'm the one who might have the, whatever we call this position at this point in time, and I'm fine with that, although I did detect a little bit of sarcasm and negativity, but that's okay, that's your right. So, as you make this decision, you wonder what the consequences will be ultimately down the road. I'm not going to fight you on the law, because I haven't studied it, but I can tell you philosophically, this and everything that else is happening, I personally do not agree with. And I'm not saying that we should shut the doors, not in my backyard, this is in the Hamptons, but we're not Manhattan, and we're not New Jersey either. But just think about it. So, this Lot 10, which is potentially, clearly, an issue because of an environmental issue, and frankly, from what I look at, and I should probably do a lot more work on studying it, but I have to work all the time just because I have to, right? You know what, as I look at it, eh, I don't really like it, because of the, because of the views that is now going to start to diminish, because of the impact on the ecology of the area, you know, my property abutting to this along with Kearney. So, I question, why are we here originally? And why don't I go and do this, and go put 10 minutes on mine? You can just say you have five minutes rather than holding your tongue. So, that's my question. Who do you work for ultimately? And why do you choose to make, to make the choices that you make around what is going to be developed? And I'll just rest my case there. Thank you. Anybody else? Jess Kay.
Kay Quayke, and I live on F-43 Shaft Road. I know there was no minutes of that workshop where the negative declaration was decided on, but at the last town board meeting, one of the planning board members said, for the record, the ECC comments were not considered by the board when giving the project the negative declaration. I find that rather troubling.
Yes, sir. John Bowen, Gardener. I just want to read you my article in the New York Times. Letter dated November 15th to Planning Board Chair, Walco G. Consultant Mark Millsbaugh of Sterling Environmental Engineering, which is the group that you hired. Listed several deficiencies in the Shaft Road site plan application that need to be amended before the board moves much further ahead in the permitting process. Millsbaugh recommended that the applicant supply documentation of approvals from such outside agencies as the New York State Department of Environmental Conservation and U.S. Army Corps of Engineers regarding wetland boundaries, and from the New York City Department of Environmental Protection and Central Hudson Gas and Electric, since the access driveway for Lot 10 passes over the Delaware Aqueduct and under electrical transmission lines. Now, in previous instances, town planner Fryban has made mistakes with the map on this project. You have Barry Mendenbach, and I don't know anything about Barry Mendenbach, but he's worked for the developer, and he's giving you information as well, which is of course biased because you've worked for the developer. What I would like to know is, and I have no idea what the answer to this is, but have you consulted with the New York State Department of Environmental Conservation and the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers regarding wetland boundaries? Have you consulted with New York City Department of Environmental Protection and Central Hudson regarding aqueduct and electrical transmission line issues? And does this board have any desire whatsoever to listen to anybody besides town planner Fryban and the developer? Because these groups are neutral, and Sterling Engineering was hired by you to be a neutral consultant to tell you basically what's going on. So, did you listen to your own person at that level?
Thank you.
Jennifer Morosi, on Brunswick Road, I'm a Gardener resident, and I think this is a good time to bring this up. I don't know your name, but you bring up a good point that I wanted to bring up. How is it that we are having our second public hearing on an issue that never initially even met the criteria, that this site never met the initial criteria? What are the answers to his question? Did you get that information? And why are we having another public hearing? And who are you working for? That is an excellent question. The developer and Fryban seems to be like, the town has spoken out in numbers so many times, saying that we're not fans of this, this is not what we want for Gardener, and no one listens, and no one cares. So, I think that's questionable at best. Your intentions are--
Yes, sir, say your name, please. Thank you.
Tim Hunter. Thank you. I live on South Mountain Road. First of all, I'd just like to say that I came to my mailbox today, I see this is dated December 5th, but the letter announcing of this meeting today, I only received in my mailbox today. So, you know, I was very fortunate to be able to come tonight, but it seems to me that there should be, you know, certainly more, you know, greater time given, you know, of announcement of this meeting. Secondly, I just want to get this clear. The planning board hired an outside consulting firm to advise, because this is a tricky project. There's aquifer recharge, there's aquifer, there's wetlands, there's abutting conserved land, there's overhead power lines, and now, we paid for that outside consulting firm, our town here, right?
No.
That was free?
No, sir.
How did the outside consulting firm get paid?
It's an escrow account.
Who's escrow account?
The applicant paid.
The applicant has an escrow account. The town does not pay for any part of these services, provided consulting to the pay.
Okay, so what happens to the escrow account if it isn't used?
Excuse me?
If the escrow account is not used, does it go back to the applicant?
Whatever's not used, that's correct.
Okay, so money was spent for this outside firm. Did planning board chose the outside firm, or the applicant did?
Why don't you continue with your--
No, I'm just--
Let me grab that.
I'm sorry. Also, planning board chose this outside firm. Obviously, it's a firm of, yeah, perspective or a firm that you feel that their findings would be useful to advise. Yet, the East, when the findings came back and said that there were some major environmental issues, it seems that the findings of this outside firm whom you chose and the findings of the ECC were completely ignored in favor of the, you know, developers who, again, it's been well mentioned, are from other states, and may live here part-time, one of them may live here part-time, which is fine. So, I do wonder whose interests are being served here. And also, I would like to say, as you know, we just had an election recently, and I don't know about the legality of it, you know, one of the people running for supervisor is present here and is a clear opponent of this project. I personally did not appreciate the chair of the planning board writing a personal letter to the New York Times attacking the credentials and the work history of an opponent of this project who is running for public office. I don't think-- Even when I saw that the chair of the planning board wrote a letter, I mean, the planning board should be an apolitical body. Something just seemed wrong to me that the letter even appeared, and suddenly, the nature of the letter, attacking the work history of someone who in-- Look, I, I'm, you know, I understand what Fortune 500 looks like. I understand what people's, you know, it's not hired people. I understand what resumes look like. People work for several years, and then they move on. So, to say that the person who's had to attack someone's work history, when it was, to me, it seemed like an amazing work history from a person who's supposedly in an apolitical body, who obviously didn't have an understanding of how Fortune 500 works, now, this made me wonder, what was the real motivation, especially considering, at the very least, I would think that a chair of a body would recuse themselves from commenting on an opponent of a very critical project in front of them. So, not getting prior notification for this meeting, not paying attention to an outside consulting firm, and the chair of the planning board acting in a manner that just didn't seem right to me, thank you very much. I appreciate being able to speak out about those issues.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Hi. Tom Corano, property owner, Gardener. I went through most of the documentation on this project that you have listed on the website. The only thing I saw missing was there's a reference by Mr. Fryban in, this is, I'm going to regress a little bit, this was part of the negative declaration. The reason for it was that, to date, the supporting document, blah, 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 there was an 18-lot subdivision submitted to the board as a preliminary application. You don't have that on your, on your website. I'd like to see that, and if you can't post it, I'll probably go in and foil it, but that was a reference that was made, and it was something that he kind of construed your negative declaration, or your recommendation to the board for a negative declaration under a secret portion, which made it sound like the subdivision was a great thing at 10 lots, because we went from 18 to 10. It kind of reminds me of when Dorothy went behind the curtain and saw that the wizard was only a little guy, you know, it wasn't, it's kind of smoke and mirrors. The important thing, and I'll just mention a few points here, and this is after looking through all these documents, I spent some time on it. The Mendenbach Eggers letter dated December 1st, it says, and this is, these are technical points, that really, a planning board, you can't sit there like deer in the headlights, you've got to start taking somebody things, and you've got to drill down on them, you've got to understand them, and you've got to do something about it. You can comment, when somebody comes before your board, you can ask questions, you can comment, you can, you can shape things the way a board, or a board that represents the town of Gardener wants it to look like. And I'll give you an example here. This is the Mendenbach Eggers letter dated December 1st, it says, "Please be advised that the full build-out of our 10-lot subdivision will result in less than 5 acres of total disturbance in accordance with New York's general permit for stormwater." So, essentially, just saying, we're not going to do a stormwater, because, because, he goes, "We have attached the site disturbance plan showing 4.3 acres of disturbance in revised SWIP notice of the tet." Well, if you look at that document up there, when somebody does a subdivision application like that, typically, there's bulk tables. Every lot up there should have an associated bulk table that you can go to, and you can make a determination about area disturbance. In a lot of these documentation here, there's no way to calculate. I'm wondering if Sterling or Mr. Fryban took the time to check and see if we were at 4.3 acres, or we were over the threshold of 6 acres, which would constitute that that document had to be submitted and had to be enforced. I can move on, I get a bunch of points, and I put this comment letter for the board members, so you can, you can take a look at it. And then the issue of access that these people have--
Please submit the document.
I'll hand them, I made six copies, I'll give them to you. And then the question about the access, New York City Department of-- It says, this is Mendenbach again, Eggers, "We are in the process of contacting the New York City Department of Environmental Protection and Central Gas and Electric for approval of crossing these easements on the site. Correspondence from these agencies, when received, will be forwarded to the planning board in a discussion." All I can say to you is that one or both of those crossings are denied, then this 10-lot subdivision is going to be a 5-lot subdivision. It's going to radically change. I submitted to Chairman Calucci a few weeks back a typical correspondence that was framed by another planning board that stresses the completeness of documentation before your board. I don't know how you could even be having this meeting without those two approvals. You're sitting here, and you're doing a preliminary flat, and you don't have approval for Central Hudson Gas and Electric that touches Lot 9, Lot 10, Lot 3, and Lot 2, and then if you take Delaware into consideration, Lot 9, and then you don't even show the rest of the continuation. The calculations I mentioned on stormwater aren't on this document. Okay, I've got a lot more, I'll give you my letter. The senator from-- North Knot Road is going to give me her time. South Mountain Road.
North Mountain.
Okay. So, my point is here, that we've got to tighten our belt. None of the documents are stamped. There's no, there's no PE stamp on that drawing. There's no, there's no survey stamp on that drawing. Does anyone here know what PE means? Any of the board members know what PE? You know what that means? Essentially, it's like an oath. It means protect the public. When you, when you drill down on it, and you narrow down on exactly what it means, it means protect the public. So, from now on, the documents come before this board shouldn't even be looked at unless they have a stamp on them. That holds them to the fire. They have to do things accurately. They can't make broad assumptions, or false assumptions for that matter. So, anyway, like I said, get these approvals, and then move forward on this application. Right now, this application is incomplete, and you should wait until March until they get those answers.
You ready to give us your letters?
I got them. I didn't know if I was allowed to cross the line.
Okay, who's next? Thank you for your comment. Yes, sir.
Excuse me, in answer to my question, I know I can't ask questions, but can you post that 18-lot preliminary proposal that was issued?
It's in the conservation analysis. The actual-- This is the 18-lot layout, it's part of the conservation analysis. It's an appendix in the conservation--
Because that whole determination under secret was based on the fact that we went from 18 lots to 10, and had painted a rosy picture of this application. Mr. Fryban painted a rosy picture of it.
We've got it in the Dropbox, which has--
I'm not sure. You put a lot of stuff in the Dropbox, and I don't know, and I think there's--
I'll respond to you. I had a--
it does, virtually ignoring what the public has to say. As far as the Shaft Road plan, I do disagree with some of my neighbors. I would not be happy with a downsized plan. I am absolutely in opposition to this entire plan in its entirety. It will do irreparable, irreparable damage to the wildlife, the wildlife corridor, the water resources will be overstressed, and the wetlands will be jeopardized. I would like to remind the Planning Board that once open space is lost, it does not come back. It is lost forever. I also wanted to note that you did ignore the recommendations of the Environmental Commission in terms of Lot Number 10. The Planning Board, in my view, is in flagrant violation of the intent and spirit of the comprehensive plan, as well as the open space plan. The highest priority of those plans is keeping open space open. The Planning Board does conform to the letter of the law, yet it's legal, but it flies in the face of everything that the comprehensive plan and the open space plans call for. In essence, the Planning Board has become very adept at gaming the system and getting all kinds of things pushed through to just fly in the face and violate the intention and the spirit of the comprehensive plan, as well as the open space plans, which clearly emphasize maintaining open space, keeping open space, saving open space. I will be going back to the Town Board to request a process to determine where this community wants to go in terms of open space. The comprehensive plan, as well as the open space plan, are obsolete, they're outdated. I have spoken to the Town Board before, but I think there needs to be some mechanism, some process in place where we can find and determine what are the intentions, what are the desires of this community as far as keeping open space. I think the Planning, this is just my opinion, I think the Planning Board is woefully inadequate and woefully out of date in terms of what this community is seeking. And again, I will go to the Town Planning Board and request that they develop a mechanism or a process, whether it be a survey or a referendum, to find out what does this community want? Do we want open space to be saved? Do we want to maintain open space? Or do we want to have a Walmart in town? Do we want to have a CVS in town? I mean, if that's the way people want to go, that's the way we'll go. I suspect the community wants to maintain open space. I would like to see this project, this Shaft Road project incorporated. We've got the Keenan Farm, there's the wildlife corridor, that the, the Planning Board and the Town would in that direction, rather than using the zoning and using the existing laws, manipulating that system to get all of these large projects rammed through, when I think that the community is really in opposition to this. And again, I will be going to the Town Board, and I would request that in the meantime, the honorable thing to do would be to have a moratorium on any big projects, on any large projects, until the Town acts and gets some direction or some guidance from this community as far as where we want to go in terms of preserving open space, and in terms of how development is going to unfold in this town. So I would request the honorable thing for you folks to do, moratorium, sit tight, find out where this community wants to go, and then let's do it. Thank you.
I just have one more small comment, if you'll let me. Chairman?
You are.
I, I spoke with a gentleman, friend of mine, who's pretty high up in the Department, New York City Department, and he said, and I asked the likelihood of allowing an application, subdivision application to cross the aqueduct, and he said it hasn't been done in like decades, and that the likelihood, he said it'd be hard for your municipality to get that approved. So he said he doubted very much. He said their recommendation will usually be to reconfigure so it doesn't make an incursion across the aqueduct. So just as a point for the Board.
Tomorrow, I will post a letter online from the New York State, New York City Environmental Protection dated December 11th to the owner, responding to your comments. Thank you. Does anybody else have any other comments they want to make before I bring it back to the Board? Well, I'm going to not close the public hearing at this time, I want to bring it back to the Board, and we'll discuss amongst ourselves and with the Attorney how we want to handle, whether we want to pull the Board to close the public hearing, or we want to leave the public hearing open until next month, and move on from there. Meanwhile, I think if there's no other comment at this moment, I'd like to have Mr. Fryban read his memo, and then we'll have some minor board discussion on any comments that the Board wants amongst themselves, and then we'll move on to the agenda.
This memo is online, by the way. As requested, I review the proposed open space development preliminary plat application dated October 30th, 2017, for 10-lot development on Shaft Road. By way of background, the application was first submitted in June of 2015 for conventional subdivision development of 5-acre lots with no set aside of open space. As provided in 2020-19, the Board required the applicant to prepare a conservation analysis and evaluate the potential for an open space development. In June of 2016, the Board completed their review of the conservation analysis and determined that the site merited development as an open space subdivision, setting aside more than half of the site as permanent open space, and establishing house sightings that minimize site disturbance now reported to be less than five acres. The Board granted sketch subdivision approval and directed preparation of secret documentation as an unlisted action. The applicant proposed a four-day review in July of 2016. The Planning Board thereafter assumed lead agency. Following an initial public hearing in 2016, the applicant, in response to public commentary, prepared supplemental documentation on environmental issues, including additional field studies and coordination with DEC on wetlands issues. After four months of additional field study and agency coordination, the applicant submitted a revised plat to permit reopening of the hearing on the SEAF as outlined in my May 12th, 2016 memo. In June 2017, the Board completed the public hearing to permit technical evaluation of public comments, and retained Bagden Environmental to resolve questions on the environmental documentation that had been supplied by the applicant. That's a July 6th, 2017 letter. Bagden also reviewed the ECC report of May 15th, in his letter of May 15th, 2017. A subsequent letter dated August 11th, 2017 resolved remaining outstanding issues. The Board scheduled a special workshop on August 22nd to step through each of the 11 SEAF impact assessments. Each of the 11 impacts were addressed in a draft Part 3 dated August 3rd, 2017 memo, and the Board members reviewed the technical and public commentary on each. Small impacts were noted on Items 1 and 2 by consensus of the members. The Board left open pump tests and questions on the open space plan. A follow-up letter by Ecological Solutions, August 28th, was also submitted on these issues. The applicant correspondence was submitted to Sterling Environmental and was reported in the November 15th, 2017 letter. In September, the summary of the workshop meeting assessments were presented as a draft negative declaration as evaluated at the workshop. The Board again reviewed consensus findings, and by motion adopted the draft negative declaration as compiled by the Planning Board attorney. Additionally, it was noted that by virtue of local court precedent, a separate hearing is required to study the preliminary plat as outlined in Chapter 188 of the Town Code. The Board authorized a public hearing upon required new notice and received a completed subdivision documents. The applicant has submitted revised preliminary plat information dated October 30th, 2017, to get together with completed engineering documentation, including a final estimate, Surface Water Pollution Prevention Plan. The documents have been submitted to Sterling Environmental for engineering review by motion at the September 17th, September 2017 meeting. We did receive a report on that. I don't know if you want to read that in a little--
The, the yesterday's report?
Yep. You want to read that?
I'm going to make a comment on it.
In any case, I'll finish up. Secret status is complete. The subdivision review process, the requirements for subdivision approval are distinct from site plan and special permit processes and the findings of 2020-65. The Board has effectively completed the examination under 188-13B, that's the subdivision regulations, in establishing the physical layout of the subdivision. The detailed data developed during the SEAF review on topography, wetlands, drainage, access, relation to the Town Plan, and the zoning map are addressed by the negative declaration. These requirements are memorialized in the preliminary plat documentation, as well as submittals on the conservation easement language and the driveway maintenance and individual lot deed restrictions. The documentation now before the Board provide constitutes the data required on 188 for, for actually the final plat review. To the extent that the preliminary plat does not infer further, further changes, a final public plat hearing is actually not required. It is recommended that the Board conduct preliminary plat hearing to evaluate performance of the application to Town zoning, comprehensive plan, and Chapter 188. Secret is complete. Upon receipt of all relevant commentary, the Board can close the hearing and complete the review of the preliminary plat.
Did you have a direct--
I think you should have, yeah. It just came in today, but--
Right. So, the Board, I have forwarded you a letter dated December 18th from Sterling Environmental, Tyler Sweet, engineer. I'll read the letter. It says, "I reviewed the SWPP and construction plans that I found. Numerous errors, the only one of which is that is critical that the SWPP does not include soil restoration. They should be addressed before any, any SWPP is accepted." And then it goes on to indicate, "Section 1-1 refers to road construction. There are no roads, and this should be changed to be common driveway." Item 2, "Section 1.4 has an error encapsulating post-construction impervious cover. The text states the post-construction will be 1.9% impervious. The table provided on the site disturbance drawing indicates 1.63 acres of impervious cover." If all the items are totaled, it equals 1.65 acres. I understand each is plus or minus, so that can be explained. However, it does not account for Lot 5 as it is existing. The existing impervious area of Lot 5 must be added into the total area of impervious cover after construction. Comment 3, "Section 2.2 refers to inlet sediment traps to protect catch basins, yet no catch basins are proposed." Item 4, "Section 2.34 states that the bioretention zone shall not be constructed until all contributing drainage areas are stabilized. There are no bioretention zones shown on the plans." Item 5, "Section 2.36 also includes reference to bioretention zone." Number 6, "The SWPP does not include soil restoration as required by New York State DEC in Section 4.52 of the 2016 New York State Standard and Specs for Erosion Sediment Control. Areas to be vegetated or disturbed graded and soil restoration measures need to be applied." That was the initial review by Sterling. I, I also received a letter from Sterling at the same time indicating that they are going to further review the preliminary plat that we have here, and will have comments to us at the end of this month in time for our January meeting. With respect to Sterling's letter also, you have a letter in your file from December 1st from Mendenbach and Eggers, the date of December 1st, as I said, indicating responding to all of Sterling's comments in the November letter. That should be in your packet, and that should answer, it'll respond to some of the public's comments tonight with respect to the question about the DEC permit, the question about the DEP permit, and Central Hudson Gas and Electric. As I stated earlier, as you know, that we have received a letter from New York State Environmental Protection dated December 11th, which we will, if we haven't posted, we will post tomorrow for the public's review. So that is the correspondence with respect to Sterling Environmental that I wanted to comment on, that the public has, has questioned about, and I think that'll help clear up so many questions that the public has raised, which are very important points, in my opinion. Again, the, I will make sure that the conservation analysis showing the 18-lot subdivision layout can also be posted tomorrow. Does any of the Board have any comments before we move on? Yes, sir?
I do. So, just a question. So, even if nothing happens on Lot 5, it has to be included in the--
The, the total impervious surface of the development has to be calculated.
So, so what's already there is also included? That's what you're saying?
It has to be added into the total.
Okay. But I didn't know, I, when I read it, I read it tonight, I was, I was surprised about that, so, you know.
What are we, the, what can we comment on right now? What is it that you want us to comment on? On the letters, or on what? Mr. Fryban's?
You're welcome to comment on Mr. Fryban's letter, if you'd like.
On the memo?
Yeah.
Okay. Well, yeah, I'd like to comment on that. He says, number 5, the last sentence, "The Board left open pump tests and questions on the open space plan." This goes to the draft of the minutes that, right, so the totality is not seen yet since it's a draft, but I take tremendous issue to those minutes. They are completely inaccurate, and they paint a picture of the Planning Board that is also inaccurate. And what I witnessed that day was pretty outrageous. It was outrageous, and heated towards me, but more importantly, what was happening was Mr. Fryban had perhaps just read the map wrong, the open space plan map wrong. He had put what he thought were, he had put in the draft of the negative declaration in his comments, saying it's a low priority area, and how was that? It wasn't until I questioned what was going on, that Mr. Calucci, you said, "I should have the map with me at all times." Mr. Fryban gave me the map, he said I was wrong, he said the ECC was wrong, he said the Bagden report was wrong, and that was the end of it. We did not agree to table that and open it up at the next meeting. I was the only one who opens it up at the next meeting. So the process was flawed. People were treated very bad, or one person was treated very badly, and it would have gone just the way it was if I hadn't supplied my comments at the next meeting in September, when Mr. Brandon was here, and Mr. Brandon could look at the map and saw otherwise. So really, the issue is how, what is our process, and shouldn't our minutes reflect reality? Why are we misleading the public in our minutes? So what I've done is I prepared a letter which I will not put on, I'll not read it in the record, but I want it to be in the record, and I'll pass this around to the Board members, and then make some extra copies to the public. And I don't know why anyone would want to, well, I'll use the words deceive the public about what happened. I don't know why anyone would want to do that, but that is in fact what happened. He said the Baden report was wrong, and that was the end of it. We did not agree to table that and open it up at the next meeting. I was the only one who opens it up at the next meeting." So the process was flawed. People were treated very bad, or one person was treated very badly, and it would've gone just the way it was if I hadn't supplied my comments at the next meeting in September, when Mr. Brandon was here, and Mr. Brandon could look at the map and saw otherwise. So really, the issue is how, what is our process, and shouldn't our minutes reflect reality? Why are we misleading the public in our minutes? So what I've done is I prepared a letter, which I will not put on, I'll not read it in the record, but I want it to be in the record, and I'll pass this around to the board members, and then make some extra copies to the public. And I don't know why anyone would want to, well, I'll use the words deceive the public about what happened. I don't know why anyone would want to do that, but that is in fact what happened. And what's interesting is Mr. Friedel's name is on the minutes. He said he didn't write it. He said that Mr. Frydan did.
All right. So, I don't even remember this map at the workshop meeting. The first time I saw the map was at September 19th meeting. And I did not write the minutes. And so if the map did come up, I sure don't remember that map coming up at the workshop meeting, but I do remember it coming up at the 19th meeting, and we passed it around the computer, we looked at what we had blown up, but there was a copy that was in somebody's file that I ended up in my file, that clearly stated, "Not for comprehensive plan on the map." And that's all I can say about that.
Does anybody else have any other comments that they want to?
I'm confused. Is there a change in the minutes that you want to propose?
Yes, that is the, yes, and that, you'll have that in my notes.
Okay. So I think, Carol, in all due respect, any changes to the minutes, we'll discuss it. We have a item on the agenda that will get to making those changes, and we'll adopt them in whatever way that the majority of the board feels necessary. All right? Again, thank you for your comments. Does anybody else have any comments that would respect this application?
Just, so, in September's meeting, you talked about that part of the development was in fact at a higher, I'm sorry, this is a faulty connection, is at a higher value in a comprehensive plan, and it was mainly affecting that Lot 10 area.
Open space, not kind of open.
Was it open space?
Yeah.
The open space plan, which is not part of the comprehensive plan. That's where I get confused.
Not part of the zoning law also.
It's not specified.
The open space plan and the comprehensive plan do not have the force of law.
But you have comprehensive.
So what's their value, when we evaluate this, because this is the, I know the zoning encourages these open space developments, and you hear open space plan, so what is the...
All right. So Warren was the chair, but I was also on the open space commission. So if you wanted to conserve your land, you presented us with a map, and we were actively looking for farmland or foul foreign land or whatever at the time, and on air, there would be ratings. So when we did our whole comprehensive, we did all these questions and all this other stuff, and when we looked at it, there was these markings, you know, what was considered more valuable or less valuable, and a lot of it had to do with what you could see. If you were driving down the road, you could see it, then that was considered more valuable. But it wasn't, in this case, it didn't even include the wetlands, which I thought was pretty funny, but that's not what we're looking for in the open space thing. We're looking at unobstructed views. That's basically where it was. And, so, no. It was kind of arbitrary, if you're honest with me, but we did use the maps when we did Kieran and when we did...
Well, and, you know, the whole purpose of the open space plan was to get people involved and interested in protecting open space. This particular development, the Shaft Road development, is proposing to protect 55 acres out of 87 acres by a conservation easement. It seems to me that on the issue of protecting open space, this development does an incredible job, at no cost to individuals protected.
So my take on that is they're constraining land that's already constrained. In other words, if you look at the green, that's already constrained land. So when we, when the zoning talks about open space development, does it talk about constraining already constrained lands?
The idea is to get as much of it touching each other as you can, so keeping it all in one contiguous parcel. And on this property, that big piece of green touches the Martin-Kieranis farm, which is southern of the bottom of that map, so part of the open space goal is keep pieces of big open spaces connected, which this open space development also achieves. And this is the first development in Gardner that's being processed under the open space subdivision rules, which if you're involved in that whole open space, let's say, open space seven or 10 years ago, that was a big effort to come up with a zoning process that encouraged and preserved open space. This is the first time it's being used.
So would you restate your point key?
Well, so, like, just when I, so, is there, from a planning standpoint, the open space map that you referred to, that we saw, does that play a role in us considering what the, from a planning member's standpoint, of what we approve or don't approve based on what we're looking at?
I think the answer is yes, it might as well, but I think there are other considerations, including the fact there are going to be 55 acres here protected by easement.
But it's constrained land anyway. You know what? It's not, you're a developer, and it's Army Corps, it's not VEC. It's, no, no, it is not VEC, it is Army Corps, and you know that you can do limited cutting, you could do other things, you could put fields in there and everything else. Now, you're not allowed to do that stuff, and you should know that, you're a developer. So you're asking a question that you absolutely should know.
Well, how did you arrive that it's Army Corps?
Because I know it's not VEC. We've done over this, the whole thing, and I've worked on projects that had Army Corps, and I know what's allowed and what's not.
Well, what you're stating, Carol, just sort of occurred, you're understanding it, right? This has not been designated DEC wetland. That's the point that we're making here. That's not, we're not saying that it's not wetland.
It's not on the map.
It's not map, that's the point.
We have the letter saying that it really is not an issue, that if it's not on the map, it is still subject to DEC regulations.
And the developer did establish all of the boundaries around it in excess of what the boundaries would require if it had a designated wetland. So, I mean, we're getting off the subject, I think, in some regard here, because these things, this is issues that we've already gone through. However, again, to point out what John just said about Army Corps engineers issue, there are, there is federal wetlands there that the applicant has had to apply permits for, for Lot 10 driveway, and that is part of the process that the applicant is going through. I just want to make those points clear.
So I guess my point is, boy, remember, is that my intuition when just walking around it is that Lot 10 is probably the biggest, and we've talked about this, like, for me, just practically, I'm not a professional, I just live in the town, I walk around, I bike all over the place. I look at that, and I'm going like, that to me breaks up the viewscape, it breaks up, you know, it's, that's the one thing I would like as a planning board member not to be there. But it seems like our zoning not only allows for that to be there, but it wants us to do subdivisions like this. So, so I'm sort of struggling because I don't like it, but because I don't like it, can I just vote no?
I got a question. How does it break up the viewscape? You couldn't even see that from the road where Lot 10 is.
You don't see it from...
You don't see it from anywhere.
No, wait, 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 John, that is not, that's not fact, that you cannot see it from the view shed.
From the road?
We're not talking about from the road, we're talking about from the view shed. This property can be seen from the view shed, absolutely.
Oh, you mean, you're talking from the map.
Yeah, I can show you pictures of it back in October.
But that's not, that's not what we're talking about there.
Right. That's not, okay.
What's also the wildlife cover here? Lot 10 is just in wildlife.
So doesn't the planning board have the ability to ask the applicant to take another look at Lot 10?
Yes.
Let's have the lawyer give us...
My answer is yes. We're going through a preliminary plat review process. There are standards on plat, so we can take a look at the arrangement, the layout, and those sort of things that go into the plat. So, yes, you can take a look at it. I would say that we're in the middle of the public hearing, awaiting on expert consultant comments from Sterling Environmental, so it would be good to not dive too deeply into we kind of get through all of this, but in answer to your question, yes, I do think that it is on the table to look at the arrangement and layout of the lots, and that's at this stage for preliminary plat, what you're looking for. And then, really, the next step when you go to the final plat is when, in theory, that you want to have the plat set between preliminary and final. I think we were also asking about the open space plan, comprehensive plan, I would consider those guidance documents. I mean, the zoning law is the law of the town, the zoning law was adopted and has to be in compliance with the comprehensive plan. Comprehensive plan sets out the goals, and the zoning basically executes them or puts them on paper for the process. And so my recollection of that, you know, that process some tennis or more years ago was, was a comprehensive plan adopted. From there, Joel Russell was hired, who did a very detailed zoning law, put in place those recommendations of the comprehensive plan, and then, you know, at some point or the day within that, or just after it, the open space subdivision materials were added by, you know. So I do think you have the ability to look at those plans for some guidance and direction, but basically, the zoning law is already in compliance with the comprehensive plan. That's the sequence of the compromise.
Mr. Frydans, did you see the letter from the DEC about 100 foot buffers?
I was not recalling that. I believe I am sending you, so you have a...
No, I don't. I don't have it on my computer. I was just curious.
I guess my comment was, like, when you were saying that they're DEC wetlands, I, because they're not mapped, I was not thinking that that was...
I think that's what the, that's how I interpreted that letter, that they're saying it's well over the, what is it, 12.4 acres, it's subject to the, just because it's not on the map doesn't mean that it's not subject to DEC regulations. That's how I read that letter. So I think that, well, what we should do, well...
Well, they put the 100 foot buffer in, I think it's a building of belt and structure, but that's not what I'm saying in the law. DEC regulations based upon that, 12.4 acre...
But then you would have to challenge what the DEC said in its letter. I think what we need to do is...
Can I only let her argue with, and when I argue with you, I'll take a look at it.
And then, did the Army Corps allow, you know, you have to get a permit from the Army Corps, you're gonna, do they have permits?
Well, no, because, and we've heard this a couple of times tonight, the process is, you don't apply for permits until you go through a preliminary plat and at least acknowledge that this board is satisfied. In some sense, why apply for the, excuse me, Army Corps permit for Lot 10 when I've got some members of the board saying Lot 10 shouldn't even be there? So the process is, this board lays out the map to their satisfaction, and then between preliminary and final, we'll make the application as a condition of approval to get them. If they can't get them, as one of the other proposals won't, some portion of the plan fails. But you don't apply for permits, and then have this board go along the road 50 feet over to the west, and then the whole permit application fails. Sequentially, I would not expect this or any other plat to apply for permits.
Just want to say, please, Brent, I said this many, many, many months ago, I don't know, you definitely not here. I was at a DEC meeting a couple of years ago, and this is what I heard, that they already had created a map, it's all drafted, or however you describe, they didn't have enough money for spams to do the notice requirement to all the members of the public, and that is why it never got put into place.
There's, I've heard some story along those lines, whether it's for this community or elsewhere, something where they draw some of the mappings or remappings, get held a hold on themselves for spams.
So, we have a letter that was, I just received from the applicant, that I'll also post for the public's viewing tomorrow. It's basically correspondence from the US Army Corps of Engineers to the applicant. It's indicating that they have received a pre-construction notification by email on August 15th, and due to my excessive workload, this is coming from Brian Porzell from the US Army Corps of Engineers, he states, "Due to my excessive workload, I was unable to provide a written determination within 45 days of its submission. In accordance with the current nationwide general permit regulations, if the Corps of Engineers district does not respond to a pre-construction notification within 45 days of receipt, then the applicant may proceed with the project as proposed. That means you must perform the work as proposed in the pre-construction notification, including any proposed mitigation. Any substantive changes to the project would require you to submit a new notification to this office." I'll post that online.
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman, why don't you read the other document you said you got from the DEP? Because that threshold isn't met. That's a moot point. That entire letter that you read would be a moot point.
The New York City Department of Environmental Protection has received a drawing titled preliminary plan for open space subdivision of lands on Shaft Road LLC, last revised 10/30/17. As previously indicated, the August 16th, 2016 letter from the DEP, the Delaware Aqueduct traverses the width of the subject parcel. Based upon a review of the submitted drawing, it appears that the shared driveway for lots 8, 9, and 10 crosses over the subsurface easement of the Delaware Aqueduct. As such, please be advised that there shall be no wells or borings within 100 feet horizontally, and no deeper than 740 feet below the ground surface from the edge of our subsurface easement. Thank you for the opportunity to provide comments. You may reach the undersigned at his email or a phone number with any questions if you care to discuss this matter further. I'm not commenting any further on the letter. It'll be posted online tomorrow. Thank you. Okay. So I'll bring it back to the board. If there's no further comments, I'd like to have a motion to, on the public hearing, whether we want to continue the public hearing. We feel that we are ready to deliberate on the preliminary plat, or if we'd like to hold the public hearing open for another month until we receive any, possibly we'll receive more information. That's up to the board. Can I have a comment, please?
Yeah, just because of the Sterling review is not complete, I think at this point you really need to hold the...
I just wanted to make sure that we, I appreciate that. That would be my recommendation, and if the board, if anybody from the board feels compelled to tell me that they want to close the public hearing, please speak up, otherwise we'll just continue the public hearing. Okay. So I don't need a motion on that, right?
Oh, you do need a motion to continue.
Okay. So I'll need a motion from the board to continue the public hearing at the regular Town of Gardner Planning Board for January, excuse me, I'm gonna, my, I don't know. The regular town board, planning board meeting will be Town of Gardner Planning Board meeting will be held on January 16th, 2018. May I have a motion for that? To continue the public hearing for this Kibiyah subdivision. Move. We have good LLC. I'll move. By John Friedel. I'll second it.
I'll second it.
Carol, second. All in favor? Aye. I oppose. Motion carries. Okay. So for the public's understanding, we are maintaining the public hearing at the January meeting. If you want to submit any comments, please do so. You can always reach me by cell phone or email, and like I said, I will post any further information and correspondence that I have with respect to this application tomorrow, sometime tomorrow.
Mr. Chairman, did Mr. Frydan's comment indicate that you're expecting another report from Sterling? Is that...
I did state that. So Sterling Environmental has been reviewing the most current plan with its latest revision of 11/30/2017, where they moved the fire truck turnaround on Lot 10. So he is reviewing this preliminary plat. He has commented on the stormwater pollution prevention plan like I read into the record here tonight. He'll have a further comment, a letter sometime on or before the first week in January, he promised me. I will, once we receive that letter, we will post that online. Anybody needs a hard copy, please see me. Thank you. Yes, ma'am?
Is it too late to say something? Or do I have to wait till next time?
Well, if you could either email me, or you can, the public hearing will be open next month, and you can comment there. Thank you. All right. Warren, you have a comment?
Yeah, I'd like to say one thing, this is my last planning board meeting. I know that will make a lot of people in the room unhappy. It will make me unhappy too, actually, because it's been...
because it's been very satisfying. But I have some experience with open space, and particularly some experience with conservation easements. Since I won't be involved in the future, I'd like to pass around a little discussion guide for, on the conservation easements for Shaft Road that the planning board can consider and discuss and deal with as, when the time needs appropriate.
Okay. Well, thank you, Lauren. Do you want to, if you're ready, do you want me to read it into the record here, or read it for the public?
I don't think that's necessary. If the public is interested, there are more copies to. But basically, it just deals with the elements of the conservation easement, the monitoring of the conservation easements, and who would own the conservation easements. And it really gets, boils it down to what decisions the planning board has to make about the conservation easements for Shaft Road.
Well, thank you, Lauren.
Mr. Chairman, can you post that as well?
There's actual copies here, if anybody wants to jam. Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to throw that in. Okay, so I'd like to move on into the agenda. We have a, it's nine o'clock, and we still have some business to conduct. All right, so we're gonna jump into communication continuation of the board's comments on the seeker with our attorney, Dave Brennan, with respect to the Harvard Project. Dave, thank you.
Thanks. I just asked for a few moments. I just wanted to update the board. I'm still preparing my write-up, just based on the discussion had at the workshop meeting, and it's taken me a little bit longer to get everything where it needs to be. And I do think at some point, when I bring it back to the board, I would expect next month, that there may be some areas that we wanted to discuss, and as to whether or not we have all the information we need, or if we need more information in certain areas. And then I know, just, I spoke with Mr. Millsbaugh, and one of the other things that we went through, the CAF form, but it was also held open for public comment, and some will want to consider those, those public comments as part of that process, when we get back to that. But that's obviously a very big project, it takes me a bit of time to do like that. I just wanted to, I told you I was aiming to bring it with me tonight. It didn't happen, unfortunately. I apologize for that, but I wanted to not let the meeting go without an update. And I don't, I don't believe the applicant's here, and that was add, oh, I'm sorry, I didn't, with my back. But anyway, it was, that was added to the agenda, so I can give the board a quick update as well.
So I'd also like to give you an update, the board, an update. At the last meeting in November, when Mr. Millsbaugh was here, he contacted me the next day, and we contacted the applicant. And Mr. Millsbaugh and I, with permission from the applicant, took the plans to the site and spent about three hours on the site, going through every aspect of the plan. I then have forwarded all of the communications from the neighbors, neighbors and the, and the town spokes, whether they're neighbors or not, to Mr. Millsbaugh, and he is actually, you know, going through them letter by letter, and making sure that he has a thorough review of the forthcoming. So we have visited the site. We've actually been right down through the river, been climbed over pretty much, I would say, 100% of that site to make sure we're fully aware of the aspects of the project. I appreciate the applicant letting us on the property, and we'll look forward to getting the Mr. Millsbaugh's comments. So, does anybody else on the board have any questions about anything that they want to share with Mr. Brennan, before he continues his write-up?
This isn't directly from Mr. Brennan, but I was just interested, what the, like, what product Mr. Millsbaugh is expecting? Is he responding directly to comments from the public? Is he gonna summarize? Like, do you know sort of what direction these aims to go with?
I don't know what direction, but I do know that, you know, the focus has been on, from the neighbors, as everybody's aware here, I'm sure, that the big focus has been on noise. I know that that's, we've been deliberating, he's been deliberating on that. And it says, yesterday, we had a phone conference for well over an hour with Mr. Millsbaugh, Mr. Brennan, myself, and Mr. Fryban, going through numerous aspects of the process and concerns of the, of the neighbors. So that's what's taking place to date.
I just wanted to ask, just to be sure, that under, on a special use permit, when it comes to mitigation of anything that would leave the site, dust, dirt, noise, you can hold the applicant to a higher bar than a normal application as a condition of approval, correct? It was my understanding when I read the zoning, that it's, it's, it spoke specifically to...
I'll let Mr. Brennan...
So...
I'll send you a section of the zoning.
I believe, I know what you're, what you're talking about, but...
It's under a major special use permit?
Correct. So you, you can handle it a number of different ways. You can, you can address, if there are concerns that you find necessary to address, you can do it as a condition of approval, whether it's a condition of approval, or whether maybe it's a, in some sense, a performance standard. Or, you know, you have to, you have to evaluate the project based upon the special use permit criteria, and the board ultimately will have to make findings as to each of those. And for the special use permit to be issued, against, the idea of special use permit is, is for projects or uses that, due to their nature, require additional scrutiny or review, or have the potential for, you know, different or other impacts. And so the board, I believe, has a fair amount of discretion under the way your code is written. In fact, a very large amount of discretion in coming up with your, I call it your findings as to those factors. And so, you know, once we get through and analyze all the information, and we can talk about that, but I think there are a number of different paths that the board can follow in addressing it, including the ones you mentioned.
Thank you.
Anybody else from the board have any comments on the Harvard Project before we move on to the next item on the agenda, which we're moving into informational? Okay, if there's no further comments, I will recuse myself. Item number three, this is Watergrass Hill Bed and Breakfast at my father's old farm that he has recently sold off to my younger brother. And I'll step back to the table to try and let the white show.
I'm gonna come and drop the question, Jerry.
So here, if you show up from the water, because there are lots of wetlands, you want to build a dog, it's based on that. I understand that. outside.
Thank you.
Outside. How are you doing? Right, if we come back to our... Excuse me, folks, I, we, I've got some other business we have to do, so I have to ask you just to take your conversations outside, please. I'm sorry. Out of respect for the, these kind folks who have waited, now I'm gonna have to sit up here. So what can we do for you this evening, Josh?
So before, it is a sketch plan of the property located around the bridge that we currently own, that we're going to be coming back to the board presumably next month with an application for bed and breakfast. Would be a core bedroom, which is currently owned by my parents, which we now own, and...
Thank you.
So, I mean, really, we're just here to gather information, in hopes of coming here next month with everything that you would like to see, other than the application filled out, the site plan presented, and kind of understand the process a little bit better, sort of, than, well, one.
Jim, is this an allowable use where they are?
I haven't had a chance. It used to be. I'm not sure what, called in supplemental regulations, unless the applicant's looking up.
Did you happen to look up the zone?
The code itself, I don't have, I don't have a section. No, I don't, probably did. We did look it up. I spoke with the building inspector, permitted use. And the application would include site plan.
Okay.
Is what we have stated.
Excuse me, I'm having trouble hearing the gentleman with everybody in the audience. Be quiet, please. Thank you.
I'm sorry, what was that, the district area you were...
Zone, is it our?
It's a permitted use. It's under, but it's a, a use by right, subject to site plan review by the time of board.
Presumably, if the, if the house, is it, the house now, is it conforming to the zoning? Or is it non-conforming?
It is conforming to the zoning, yeah.
So at this point, it's just a matter of site plan, and typically what the board looks for is the ingress and egress, safety of the site, screening from close adjacent neighborhoods, and adequate parking.
Do you have any plans with the existing barns?
No plans.
Yeah, can you make that...
Well, you know, you know, just, just improve what's there, really. Other than that, no, nothing changing, you know, for the time being.
Your parties, the barns, you know?
Oh, we're gonna have family parties there, I know.
What kind of party?
I was teasing. Family parties.
No, a lot of the bed and breakfast, they'd take one of the barns, convert it to a venue where people would come for...
So, under, under the code, the definition talks about that needs to be a primary residence of the owner proprietor, so that's sort of, you mean here a primary residence?
Correct.
And five bedrooms is the maximum?
So, five bedrooms total, or five bedrooms for, available for...
Five bedrooms available for overnight accommodations.
Okay. So you could have six bedrooms, one for the owner and five.
Actually, as many bedrooms as you want, but only five for overnight.
Well, as many bedrooms as you want, but only five for overnight.
So what about weddings and parties and stuff like that?
We don't have a plan for that right now. We just want to get it open as a B and B.
So down the road, though?
Well, that would be a different use, and that would have to go to the building inspector.
Well, all right, just 'cause I'm kind of a neighbor, but...
Where does the zoning tip?
We're neighbors. We're not neighbors, you, but I guess not, we're all neighbors.
Maybe you have to convert a building, so it goes to the building inspector, building tow issues, parking issues. It would require another site plan. It's effectively a change in the site plan.
Oh, 'cause I remember the one on 32, they wanted to have selected wedding, and they had to come back in front of us and stuff like that.
Right, same thing.
Is there a people limit where it goes from being a casual, occasional use to something that...
This would be exactly what you were talking about, where the board can establish those criteria, because they're not already established by zoning. I don't quite agree with Mr. Brennan on the issue of what you can do in a special permit. The town board can do a lot more in a town board special permit than the planning board. Planning board's supposed to administer the zoning as written, retaining conformity of it. Things that are not addressed in zoning, the board can take up. The town board can effectively create the rules as they go on special permits.
Okay.
So you just need a site plan prepared by surveyor or...
Engineer?
Engineer, something that has an accurate depiction of the site, and you already got the information from the building inspector about code requirements for the building itself.
Right. So if you just want to have up to five rooms for boarding, plus your owner, great. You want to start having tents and parties.
I'm gonna see it.
Come back and decide what the threshold will be. 'Cause I'm sure, you know, I've just seen it where the barns make lovely venues, more little gatherings, and if you want to do that.
This is on Philly's first, huh?
Correct.
So it doesn't have to go, well, surrounded by egg districts, don't you?
Surrounded?
Is this, is the lot in an egg district? Okay, so this, you gotta send the site plan to the plan, the Ulster County Planning Board. In terms of the site plan, it might be, did he say whether it's gonna be a major or minor?
Minor.
Minor. So it'll be up to the board on whether to have a public hearing.
Okay.
It was my understanding, there would not be a public hearing? That's at the, at the board's discretion?
Right.
Okay.
Can I have a public hearing?
What we're triggering, what we've said that need a public hearing?
A vote, where a number of us decided it was a very, a public hearing.
How much they wanted to have a public hearing.
Fair enough.
So, there, what you bring back here?
It's the, it's the hair shirt.
Okay. Thank you. Chairman, what?
Is that set in?
We'll see next month.
He's here to block.
Where'd you get word about?
Oh, okay, that was like, maybe there was something I didn't know.
Okay, we're gonna jump right into the... Sorry, I thought, I saw you here, and all of a sudden I lost you.
I'm Grant.
Welcome. You could perhaps introduce yourself, introduce...
Hi, I'm Milton Curles. I'm a real estate agent with a political banker. And I have a client who wants to sell some land, and he wants me to help him sell. It's near Shaft Road, another popular spot, I think. It's on South Mountain. And I, I made four copies, so each of them is...
Sure, we can share.
It's a little over 92 acres, and zoning is SP1, 2, and 3. It's right on South Mountain Road or Shaft. It's South Mountain, and it goes and touches the park. I don't want to stay far. And so I was just trying to figure out ways to help my client sell it. And he has a tenant presently renting a structure at the bottom of the road. There are two structures there, right on the road. Is that the one with the red tower on it?
It's where, let's bet one, come on Shaft.
This is the entire property. This is the entire property. And this is a subdivision property with a head house. So where's the house? This is a pond, there's a little red bar there. And then it was also, I put SP one, two, and three zoning met her. And so anyway, I was trying to find ways to creatively help him sell it. The tenant came forward saying, "No, I really love to buy these two structures, just on a minimal amount of acreage at the bottom, it's just five acres. SP one is a minimum of five acre, you know." And so that's why I'm here to get information on, you know, what we need to do. And I know, I hear it's a minor subdivision. So that's what this person wants, to help, you know, sell off some of this ninety-two plus acres. I approached Open Space Institute, Bob Edinburgh, to see if Open Space would be interested in buying this back piece. It's about sixty-seven acres. Went through a whole process, whole process. At the end of the day, Empire State Park doesn't want to still allow any money yet, right now. It's just the climate of it, which is a bomb, the low grade that they could have purchased it, you know? But that doesn't mean they might not purchase it in the future. So what we're hoping to do is this. I've been trying to, like, move... So this red section shows roughly what the tenant wants to buy. It's a little bit more, actually. It's shown to a little bit more. He just wants five acres down here.
So you're...
Exactly.
But that's more than a minor subdivision, right?
Well, I don't know what it is. That's why I'm here for an information meeting. First, it's just gonna be, I thought it's minor, just getting this, and then a mid-range, which is still in SP two, to sell off. And then he would hang on to this back piece for better class when OSI will buy it, as long as they can get sure that Empire State...
And is there road access to the back piece?
There's no road access, but what OSI does is they make a right of way just to increase the value of the property. Like, depreciation will come out of the, you know, not the unlocked price. So I guess this would be a major subdivision, right? It's gonna be three... No, a new schedule piece. That's all complex work here. There's an old farmhouse, a little old farmhouse, and there's a barn right on the road. They vote, one is livable, this is for the tenants living right now. What he wants to do, too, is make it such that the main barn is a large house that's been renovated into a house, is the main single-family residence. And the little farmhouse, which is 1,042 square feet, would be an accessory cottage or auxiliary cottage, however you guys say it here. And, um, so it's, I guess, like, here, the minimum, or the maximum that can be is a thousand square feet. It's forty-two feet over that. So, um, the tenant is willing to kind of build some closets in the area. I guess closets are... I mean, he's desperate to do anything, because he really wants this property. And I'm trying to help him figure out how to get it, you know? And I'm trying to help Jimmy sell some of this land, so he can still, you know, create some of his funds. So, um, anyway, it's two-part. I'm here to find out information if we can have in the SP one, five acres, close to the two dwellings. On top of that, integrated, the barn is a single-family residence, and the cottage was made in an auxiliary or accessory apartment. And would he have to alter the square footage to make that possible? I don't know how strict the planning board is, but it's four to square feet. He's willing to build closets to make it, you know, then back to a thousand square feet. And he's really willing to do anything like that.
Isn't that prior to 2008 zone?
The SP one is five, the other ones go up in there. But that's where, that's, this is a special permit use. The subdivision is sort of a secondary part of the process.
Yeah, I'm just gonna bring it up all at once, but, um... So, obviously, through the grandfather, yeah? Second home. They had two tenants, I mean, the farmhouse had tenants in it at one time. They have been in for a few months. So both places were being rented.
See, I think you leave it the way it's, this is my opinion. If you leave it the way that it's cool, but you change it, then it's an issue, you know? It's like when you fix a house, you gotta kind of bring it up to...
Yeah, why call it answer, I, ancillary, accessory?
Yeah, I know, I know.
Is that the word? Accessories, accessory, yeah.
So Jim, is it grandfathered because it pre-existed the new zoning law? The accessory cottage?
The, it's grandfathered in the context that it's a legal, it's currently legal. The question here is the proposed subdivision of that off of the parent parcel. That parent parcel has to be assessed under the terms of the SP district. And it probably has SP one, two, and three sites. You can't simply look at the bottom of it and say, "That's good for ten acres." Because if you recall, the requirement is that in the upper reaches, you have to bring down the site, those sites.
To the lowest possible.
To as low as possible. So these are all in-related. This is a very technical kind of analysis. This is not a simple three-lot or two-lot subdivision. It can't be done that way in the SP districts.
So can you give her a recommendation? It sounds like to me what your recommendation should be is to hire a consultant to guide you through, um, the code. Prepare a map.
Conservation analysis.
Conservation analysis is gonna be required absolutely. So that's another, you know, substantive...
Even for the SP one lot?
Well, it's... One, two, and three.
So really, you gotta have a full plan. Conservation analysis for the whole property. Then you say, "Here's what I'll do with the one, here's what I'll do with the other, here's what I'll do with the third."
I don't see how you could build anything more. You could maybe subdivide it, but not build.
Well, they can build if they want to build, but they're not asking to build right now with their S P four subdivision. And, uh, it's, you know, the SP district is, as Jim said, it's involved as far as whatever you want to do there. And, again, our recommend, my recommendation, correct me if I'm wrong, is that to hire a consultant to prepare a plan, bring that plan into us, and then, you know, we'll start with the deliberations and review of it.
But anybody actually can go into regulations and, you know, examine what you need to do. You don't have to have a consultant.
Right.
Generally, it is a very technical analysis required.
Yourself.
See, this district says if you have a lot and you come in and want to build a house on it, you've got to bring it to the lowest possible elevation, which he's done. The house exists at the lowest possible elevation.
At the lowest possible elevation, that's why I'm kind of like, wow.
So it's there. Well, no, but you want to subdivide it.
Well, that's true.
And then you want to build something higher up on the mountain. But the zoning says you can't do that. You have to build your house on the lowest possible spot, which it already is.
Well, let me clarify one thing. You didn't talk about building, maybe I missed it. You're not talking about building something up on the next elevation, are you?
Well, the next elevation in SP two, yes. They were gonna try and have that be a...
A buildable lot?
Buildable lot.
All right, well, the question is, Jim, if they're not proposed, they don't have to show a proposed building site if they're not intended to build, do they?
They do.
Oh, they do. And a part of that's part of the conservation analysis.
Do you remember the Shelton Road?
Yeah, yeah.
Exactly. You might want to visit the planning board offices and look at the Shelton Road subdivision, which is exactly what you have here, a long strip going up through several zones, and what they did in order to...
It's called Artmosphere.
Artmosphere, to see how to do that, what you have to go through to do that kind of subdivision. Because it's not just a matter of dividing it into five, returning it to lots, it doesn't work that way.
Yeah, because the lot's always gonna be, even though it's a lot, you say you're not gonna build it, somebody else down the road could say, "You're gonna build there," so you gotta consider it.
Well, I would think that you can't build it, that that's, so that's why I don't understand why you would do an analysis of the view.
Well, there's a lot of acreage here, too.
Yeah, but it's one parcel now, and there is the, you know, the law about the lowest possible elevation.
Right, so they give an open space development, and they can move the houses down on the lots smaller than five acres.
So in each one, you just have to show that on this lot, I'll have a home site at the lowest possible elevation that meets the SP two criteria. And the leftover, the sixty-three acres that's up in SP three, you'll have to show in this initial one altogether, there's also a suitable building site on it at the lowest possible elevation, meeting SP three criteria. And so I'm creating three lots that are all potentially buildable, legal, and I've done a conservation analysis of all three. There's my package, and then we can do a subdivision.
And you can't move it around either. You can't come back later and say you want to move it.
Right, I mean, actually, it's kind of, the land's kind of perfect for what you're saying. It's like, obviously, the structures are by the road, that's the lowest possible place. It could be, the second parcel we want to make is about twenty-seven acres from the map, what's below the Open Space Institute parcel. Best home site, in my opinion, because I do home design, I like placing houses, is probably in the lowest possible section of that mid-range, twenty-seven acres. Because it's just kind of a pain to build up, you know, to put a driveway and way up there. I mean, I'm sure anyone with enough money can do anything. But I wouldn't mind having that be a restricted building site for right there. If we have some, you know, we section it off, we say there's just a restricted building site for the lowest possible section of SP two. Is that what we're talking about? Okay. And, I don't know, nobody wants to build an SP three. It's just such an arduous piece of land you get back there in the first place. I guess anyone could if they...
It has happened.
And it has happened.
It has happened. So we have history of it happening.
I'm just trying to tell my client, just so much, you know, the back.
That occurred because the applicant said that they couldn't build at a lower spot in the SP one.
Right.
So here we have something already built in the SP one. We're talking about creating subdivisions that really defy the whole purpose of SP zoning. You've got your home, you could do a open space subdivision, filling out, if you could, if you had a road franchise, filling out the lowest possible area of where the homes are now. But I don't think you can keep subdividing to create higher levels that you can then just look for the lowest elevation of the higher level.
This, the zoning, the SP zoning allows for subdivisions, right, Jim?
Oh, yeah.
It just has different criteria. As you, I just read through this a month or so ago. As you go up, I mean, it's a high bar, but they allow you, the zoning allows you to do it.
So it's very restricted.
Allows you to build an SP three.
It allows you to build them all of them, but there are always specific technical...
If you only had SP three, it would allow you to build there.
Yeah.
That's what's really happening. If you have SP one land, you have to look at moving to a site within that SP one, or if you have just SP two. SP two, yes. The answer is absolutely, you're entitled to subdivision. The rules are based upon, you know, the zoning district and what the conservation...
And the placement of the house, let's say, for this mid-range, twenty-seven acres, has to be a certain spot.
It has to be the lowest feasible, I believe the word is, feasible site for construction of the house.
And what kind of a consultant would my client hire?
Yeah, a professional engineer?
Personally, somebody who's done this before. I don't know who did...
McCurry, Norrie, and Taroli. We're not giving you names, you know, we're not gonna recommend anybody, but John Taroli. McCurry, Norrie, and Taroli.
I saw Barry here.
Did the Artmosphere subdivision, Barry Medenbach, who's done, where can that, you know, Andy Willingham? You know, there's the whole... Yeah, Andy Willingham is the next thing I gotta discuss about the SP three district, which is Artmosphere. We have some questions about that to learn.
Okay.
So, all right, so, um, not to belabor your point, I want to push you out the door, but we have another, we have some more agenda, and if you don't...
I just have one question about something completely different.
Okay.
Again, my client has property coming in on Alhoo Post Road. And just a quick question about solar. There's a moratorium that's been lifted on solar farms.
That's correct. We have a moratorium law.
And I just have a feeling Cypress Creek contacted him, he said, "Great." And when Cypress Creek came to town, there was the moratorium.
Right, that's correct.
So now he could approach you all again about possibly having a solar firm in Mr. Ian's property.
Absolutely, for his right to review the law and then...
Okay. I think it's a timing issue.
Right, yeah, yeah.
Thank you.
Good, nice to see you.
Thank you.
Do I need to sign up to be on the informational or for the next one?
I didn't, I didn't understand your question, you want to post the board?
I, yes.
What was your, what is your question?
I'd like to ask you about a potential project.
Okay.
But I didn't know that I had to call in advance.
Okay. Does the board have any?
Actually, you need to have these things listed on the agenda.
Right.
You really can.
Right.
And that's why you have to know the appointment in advance.
Yeah, the process is, if you want to get on the planning board agenda, is you contact me or email me, however you want. And prior to, like, around the first of the month, if you want to come in and see me, show me what you're talking about, I'll guide you through it. And I can put you on informational if I need to, or if I can answer your question. You could contact me, and I can try to guide you through it. If I can't answer your question, I have seven other members here that might be able to help you, including a consultant here in the territory. Okay. We are gonna jump into county planning board report. Is there anybody here representing county planning board? Doesn't look like it, going once or twice.
Yeah.
Excuse me? Okay. We have, um, the minutes. Just so everybody knows, there, I have the minutes that we need to talk about. We also have, I have three other items, housekeeping items, that I have to take care of tonight with respect to, um, requests from the town board. So they're minor, but we'll get to them after the conclusion of the minutes. Okay. Has anybody reviewed the minutes? Does anybody have comments on the minutes? And we want to start, let's start in order. And we'll start with the June minutes.
The move that we approved the June planning board minutes.
Is there any discussion on it?
I second it.
Before we have any, for, before we have a vote...
Was my second?
That was from Ray.
Ray.
Before we have a vote, is any, are there any comments on the June minutes?
No.
For the board. Okay, we have a motion by Joe to approve the June minutes, seconded by Ray. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries. Okay. On the July minutes. Anybody have any comments or concerns about the July minutes?
Yeah, I did provide spellings, but I guess it didn't get to town, so...
I didn't hear you, Joe.
I did provide spellings, but I guess it didn't get to town.
Okay, you provided spellings, so do you want to make any...
No, 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 I was thinking about the name, like, it said comment, open the floor, name muffled. I thought I gave in a list, but maybe, I don't know, I have to, it doesn't matter.
Well, there's some spelling that has to be corrected on.
On, people who made public comment, but I don't have that list anymore, so, other than that, we'll just dispel the name, I guess.
All right. Do I have a motion to approve the July minutes?
The move to approve the July minutes.
Motion by Joe, seconded by...
Second.
Ray, again. Thank you, Ray. Any other comments?
All right.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. The August minutes. Now, let's talk about the August minutes, because this is the...
No, the business meeting was fine.
First one's a fifteen. You got two sets of minutes for August.
Okay.
The business is a business meeting, the regular meeting.
All right, so we're talking about the August fifteenth meeting. Anybody have any other comments on the August fifteenth meeting? Okay. Got a motion to approve the August fifteenth minutes. So moved, Keith. Seconded by...
Second.
Ray. Thank you, Ray. All in favor? Aye. Ray, what else we have? The August fifteen meeting?
I'm the first.
Play first, thank you, Jim.
That's a famous workshop. A famous workshop.
The workshop, right?
Yeah. It, just, I think in, when I sent these out, I put in my email the fact that there is no tape. It's blank. The way we had to put this together was I requested contemporary use notes from anybody who had them.
Right.
I did get detailed notes from Allison, which were very good, but, you know...
Allison from Young Summers, right?
From Mr. Moriello. Yeah, who was around for the...
Wait, you had notes from the trade, for the applicant?
That's correct. I have notes from the, uh, Aiden Gold, which were almost forbade in those. And I have my own notes. I also talked to Mr. Lithgow for any notes. We had tried to see whether the... We had tried to see whether the, if the video was available, but I'm advised, that's not available.
There was no video in that meeting.
So, I might remind you that this was a workshop meeting, no action was taken. All that was done was, the board was assessing the issues in the minutes, I cited the documents that were supplied to the board, and my notes, which were marginal because I was doing all the talking, admittedly, but Allison did have good notes, and certainly on the Hartwood Wood 1A things, we had notes by essentially Mr. Meddenback, which went through Mr. Moreyello, and Mr. Moreyello's notes, and that's all I have available for you.
Mr. Chairman, can we cut to the chase, is there any proposed changes to these minutes? Because if there's not, I really don't want to care to talk a whole lot more about the email training or what, is there any proposed changes?
Well, again, Joe, I appreciate that, I think what we're trying to do is establish the record here, so that, you know, if and when there would be a challenge to any part of, any of our discussions, it's clear to me to remember how these minutes were produced in the state.
And it's...
But I appreciate your comments, and...
Actually, Carol did...
Carol had some comments, if she wanted to edit the minutes, or do we want to add them, or do we want, why don't we review those? Uh, okay, so, uh...
Which will review Carol's?
Reviewing this letter from Carol on twelve eighteen, if she...
Let's let Carol review it.
Okay.
Why don't you tell us what...
Carol, what, you have something you want?
Again, I wrote this, not so much because I foresee the planning board making changes to the negative declaration, but because these minutes really opened the door as to what the process was, and how the minutes are not reflecting what happened that day. If you want me to read it, I could do that, but basically, what I remember, and I even addressed it before I saw draft of these minutes, I addressed it in my letter to the New York Times in response to Mr. Freidel's letter, was that Mr. Fryban may have just made an error, you know, in terms of how he read the, the priority score for open space, but he was adamant that day, and he said, "The ECC is wrong, the FATH report is wrong, I was yelled at for not having a copy of this priority map, of the open space map." Mr. Fryban shoved it under my nose and said, "Here, here, look, you see, it's not a high priority," and that's what happened, and that's what led me to come back, to go home, to do my research, and come back with the correct assessment of these laws. But what I don't understand is why anyone would make these minutes reflect the fact that something, something that did not happen, to say that we had agreed to address this further another day, that's not what happened.
Where, what changes do you want to make to the draft?
Well, all right, I think that should be stringed, I think.
All right, so what, I'm sorry, like, how do you...
The whole thing, wherever it says that, that we agreed to look at the map, I mean, what it really should say is what was in Mr. Fryban's draft analysis, that he found that it was a low priority area, and therefore, the open space was not an issue. That's what you have in your draft, uh, notes to us about the negative declaration, and that's what you read, and that's what we discussed.
And you raised the issue, and that's why the board, that's why the board agreed to review it further, and it came up at the September meeting.
You know, we, no, we did review it.
We did review it.
We did review it the next meeting.
We reviewed it because I brought it up.
Well, that's...
I said you brought it up.
That's the whole thing, I was just...
This is a written document, it's a written document that records our minutes, can we please have some written text to suggest that we edit the minutes?
All right.
Because that's what we're doing here.
All right, well, I supply that to you. I have supplied that to you, if you want, I could redline this.
No, you haven't, this is, this is a long, this is two pages, what happened, there's not a single word.
Joe, I'd be very happy to, I just don't, I can't redline PDF.
Okay, so I'll tell you what, in the interest...
Actually, I can't.
In the interest of recognizing your points, in the interest of continuing to move the meeting along, I would like to table the discussion, and also the approval of the draft minutes from the August twenty-second workshop, until you can provide us with a redline of what you want to amend to the minutes. Is that, is that everybody acceptable?
No, it's not okay.
Okay.
Because number one, my name's taken in vain all through this last...
Okay, I need, I put this in, I responded to that issue, and I did not put your name on there to say that you had issued this, your name was on there because you're the secretary.
I said, I'm not on it.
I drafted everything, you did not participate.
You're not letting me state my point, you're not letting me state my point. Ms. Richmond keeps attacking me, and her friends attack me, and therefore I wrote a letter defending myself, that's my whole intent of my letter, but even in her instances, when he said, "Mr. Freidel told me I was wrong about this assessment," that was done in September, we have recorded messages, that should definitely state that.
I think it was done in September.
Okay.
No, no, you started going on...
John, all right, so I, I, look, we don't need to debate this, I think that's...
I don't want to debate it.
All right, all right, but I think we need to...
But I'm tired of being direct.
All right, we need to be civil with each other, all right, number one.
So either do it or don't.
All right, so, if anybody...
And approve the minutes, can I?
No, that's not...
All right, we're not going to approve the minutes tonight, if you have any comments and redlining and adjustments that you want to make for the minute, please do them, in writing, we'll review them next month, and we'll move on, if that's okay with everybody here.
All right.
All right, does it, do I agree on that?
Could you clarify, this two-page letter that we received from Carol?
Yes.
This is not what we're talking about.
No, what Carol, what Carol did, and I respect what Carol did, is she memorialized what she believed took place at the meeting. That's a memorial, this is to memorialize it, so that she can, so that we can then have conversation on it tonight, which we're doing. Now, out of that conversation, what I believe has happened here is that now we are asked you to go back and make, edit the minutes that we have prepared, redline them, send them to us prior to the meeting, so we can all have a chance to review them, and then we will decide whether they're factual or not at the next meeting, and we'll make a vote on it. Does everybody agree with that? All right, thank you. Do I need a motion on that to approve that?
We move the people's decision on the August twenty-second.
Ray has moved the table, the discussion, I have a motion, the second, I have a second by Keith, all in favor?
Aye.
Carol, do you have any other comments? Okay, thank you, I appreciate everybody's understanding, I understand that it's a tense issue.
Spontaneous...
All right, so now we're going to move into the September minutes. Does anybody have comments on that? Okay.
Yeah, wait, wait, I heard something, but I don't understand my notes.
All right, take your time.
I'm confused, did we approve the August regular minutes?
Yes, we did, we already did. Yeah, we did that, we did August fifteenth, and we moved it fast for you, it was getting late, it was getting late, I know, I know. We're going to discuss it. Okay, all right, so we're, John, do you want any comments about the September, you want to...
Yeah, 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 so, all right, so, I don't know if I missed it enough, but, um, this is where the map was brought up, and it's not in...
Which map?
The Venice map, I was at the...
All right, I have something, letter written here, I'm sorry, I looked at this a couple days ago, and I forgot why I wrote it. All right, well, how about if we give you a chance to look at it, and jump to the October? Anybody have any comments on the October?
The first one.
The first, oh, we had two meetings in October, excuse me?
I lost it.
No, no, two meetings in November.
Give your, one in October, come on, don't derail me here, we're trying to stay on track here.
Check for ninety bucks.
All right, uh, September meeting, uh, we're, all right, so we're on the October meeting, do we have any comments on the October meeting?
Make a motion, we approve the minutes for the October meeting.
Second by Ray, motion by Keith, all in favor? Aye, opposed, motion carries. The November minutes, now we have two minutes, two meetings in November.
Right, and we also have Grace, so we have very detailed information that we used in preparation of the...
We don't need to draw attention to our clerk, but thank you for that.
And like I said, you're fine, I'm sorry.
Okay, so do we have any comments on, what's the date of the first meeting?
Fifteenth workshop.
Fifteenth, November fifteenth meeting. Do I have a motion down there, and then for approval of those November fifteenth minutes?
I've moved, approved the November fifteenth.
That's motion by Joe.
I have to recuse myself.
Okay, so two members were there.
I have to say as well, I don't think I covered the November, so...
Okay, so, do we have, we have a motion by Joe, we have a second by...
I can't second it, because you all read it.
Well, no, but we just, you have to now, because we just...
You were there.
Right, because we refused that, so...
They combined it.
It doesn't cost anything.
But I second it.
And you're exercising your powers.
Right, we just engaged.
Warren, second?
Right, and we had two extensions, we had three extensions, Keith, Ray, and Carol.
So, if you want to go back to the other one?
We just got seconded, just...
Right, we got, November workshop, the next, the regular meeting in November, what's the date?
Fifteenth.
No, fifteen is...
Fifteenth is on August.
November twenty-first is on August.
You take a vote on it?
No, we did vote on it.
All in favor? Aye. All right.
How many people voted?
Okay, we had one, two, three, four, five votes in favor, we had three extensions. For the region of not being...
I got this.
Okay, we need to know, all right, let's stay focused here, guys, November twenty-first meeting, we need approval for November twenty-first meeting, does anybody have any comments or concerns?
Once again, this was with Grace's...
Right, facts and pictures, okay. Do I have a motion?
Motion, we accept the meeting for the minutes for the November twenty-first meeting?
Motion by Keith, seconded by?
Second.
Seconded by Ray, thank you, Ray.
I was absent, so I have to stand.
All right, Josh was absent, so you have to stand.
I just didn't cover it, I must be a bit...
Okay.
See, you probably weren't there, again.
You were there. Okay, so...
Motion and a second.
We have a second?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Okay, so we have...
Three, four, five, six.
We have Josh and Carol out, okay, now, we're going to go back to John.
All right, you know what, for the life of me, I did write something, but...
Can't find it.
Again, so don't mind.
Okay, September, is the meeting that we're talking about? September, what's the date, Keith, September twenty-fourth?
Nineteenth.
Nineteenth.
Do we have any comments or concerns about the September nineteenth minutes at this time? Here in the... Motion, we accept the minutes.
Keith, you accept this, the motion by Ray, and seconded by Ray, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Okay, that was great work, guys, we appreciate your time on that, okay.
It should be, just for, make sure, the process as laid out by Mr. Brenner is that these minutes are now to be moved from draft, they're to be signed by the secretary or the clerk, copy provided to the town board, the other copy must go into the minute books. All right, so, this is there, the minute books have the signed copy, and the clerk of the town has the signed copy, and she stamps it in, you want to get both copies stamped before you put it in the minute book.
Both copies of what?
The minutes.
No, both copies, what do you mean, both copies?
You have to make two copies, two signed copies of the minutes. The town clerk's going to stamp them when she receives them, and the stamped copy then gets moved to the minute books.
Right.
And the clerk keeps one.
And the clerk keeps one. Right, you understand that?
Yeah.
You know the process?
Could be the...
Okay, and then we want to post them, all right?
And they should now say, they should have the final, you can say final or something.
Yeah, you post it after it's stamped.
Post it means on the website?
On the website, right, okay, now, look, I got fifteen minutes maybe of your time, we can, we can make this as painless as possible, or you can debate it however you want, and if we get into too much of a debate, I'm going to cut the meeting off at ten o'clock. First is, um, the kind of guard compensation benefit manual, benefits manual acknowledgement at the, at the meeting that we had, the joint meeting, I passed these out. Now, I was, what happened, though, is somehow we didn't get the manual to you. It's a forty-two page manual that's, that I have, that I'm going to forward to you tomorrow via email. I would like you to review it, make comments, if you want, to me, or to the supervisor, to the town board, however you want to do it, it needs to be brought back to me at the regular meeting, signed, this, it has to be signed.
You want to step in the electronic signature.
Okay, so...
It's only the middle section that you get, huh?
Right, I'm going to say, Mary Beth, I got her, did you copy? She only copied the middle part.
Right, it's only the middle, if you review it, you'll see what's pertinent, okay? The second thing is, all right, so you all are aware that we need to have them back, all right, that's part of...
I'm asking you the question.
Yeah.
Can, can we just sign them and scan them and email them back to you?
You can do that, it's one page.
No, no, I can do that, as long as you'll accept...
I'll accept, yeah, but you should have a, yeah, you should have a, I should have a, a original signature one, you know.
Well, you know, I mean, as long as you accept an electronic signature.
Oh, yeah, yes, I don't see a problem with that, too.
How'd you get it?
Well, I can't get it.
Okay, the second thing is, I would like to poll the board about, oh, first off, I'd like to introduce you to Maureen, who has been quietly sitting over there. Maureen is, we are anticipating that she will be hired as our new clerk to take Donna's position, Donna has been very helpful to this point during the transition, I appreciate everything that she has...
Good job, Donna. Carol, this is a bold situation, really big, right?
You should jump on.
So, anyway, Maureen was kind enough to, she made a mistake by making a phone call to me one day, not related to being shunned by me into this position, she graciously accepted to be our clerk. She has extensive experience in her, in her past employment, she's now entered into her retirement years, and she's willing to step up to the plate, I hope she knows what she's getting into.
I do after tonight.
So, we're looking forward to welcoming Maureen, she's going to be hired, we anticipate that she will be hired at the organizational meeting in January, and then between her and Donna, they'll do a transition period, and we're expecting to come up to the twenty-first century with Maureen. So, with that, Maureen lives in the town of Newburgh, the job doesn't require you to live in Garder, but the point is, is that, we, I'll get to my point, is that we would like to, I would like to make a change to the starting time of the planning board meeting. As you know, we have had, you know, we've got big agendas going on here, and I'd like to respectfully request, poll the board about the seven PM start time, for, for a whole host of reasons, which I think are pretty obvious, and if anybody has strong opinions about that, and we can't come to a majority of approval, I recognize that, so, I'll start with Carol as the lady of the board, and ask you, what is your opinion?
I, seven thirty just works better, because I don't know where I, you know, very often I leave the courthouse, like, at six or something.
I recuse myself.
Chicken, well done. Joe?
I have no objection to the time change.
Joe?
I have no objection to it. Keith? I'm getting older, I prefer a longer meeting, where it's not so serious.
Frilliver?
About noon, Josh?
I'm unable to make a seven o'clock start time, if there's no objection to the board, from the board, I could join at seven thirty, but I'm, I'm in Manhattan on every Tuesday.
You are?
And I can't leave my job before 5:00 o'clock and so I can't get back here until 7:20, 7:25 at the earliest.
Okay. Okay, um...
That guy, that's right.
And Ray?
Thank you, thank you.
You're so quiet then, I overlook you.
No, no, I, uh, 7:00 is great.
7:00 is great. Okay, um, so, uh, I, I, I do recognize the comments, um, from the, um, audience, from, from the members here about the difference between 7:30 and 7:00. I, I'm going to discuss this with the town board. Uh, they've asked me to, uh, look into the idea and, and report back to, or report back to the supervisor.
Let me suggest another idea. What if we set a hard cap for the end?
Well, let's take that a little further. I think if we tighten up our process, we should set time limits per applicant per month.
Yep.
There is no reason why it should take 45 minutes to hear an applicant monthly. If they come to this board prepared and their applications are tight, a lot of the extemporaneous nonsense that goes on will end. And I think we all agree as a board, we'd like to tighten up the requirements to come before the board so that the applications are complete.
I think it's a great idea to have a, an end time for everybody to see.
But we could do it.
What about public hearing?
Well, yeah, but you have your public hearings.
Public hearing, if you notice, we have been trying, I've been trying to maintain control of it with respect to time and, and I'm not going to just like cut somebody off. Um, as you know, I don't, I don't, I don't do that. I mean, I, I try to recognize everybody that is, has an opinion and, uh, but the point is, is to keep, to keep points. We, we do need to try to, you know, set some type of end, start and end time for the applicant. Um, and again, the constant, you know, back and forth, we try to minimize. Jim, I know, uh, I'm sorry if you're...
I understand what you want, you, the, what you're trying to accomplish here, but the, the thing is that the planning board is actually the one that is held at certain time periods. That is, if you can't get it done before midnight, okay, you need to set another meeting because your time limit on applications is fixed by law.
Right.
So you have to act within a certain period, otherwise, you know, no matter how bad the application is, you've got to somehow get through.
And that, yeah, so that's a good point. So that, that brings us, that brings me to the point of the 7:00 PM start, you know, because we need as much, you know, we, we really do need to focus on giving the applicant as much time and, so...
Can I just ask you, Jim, how does that work with piecemeal applications? If you're getting pieces in and, but you're trying to adhere to some statutory timeframe, I mean, doesn't, isn't there a point where it's...
There is. It has to be a complete application.
Yeah, we have, yeah, at, at the determination of a complete application is when you're talking about the time then starts ticking. So, I mean, you know...
I'd clarify, Jim's right, there's timeframes. The only real timeframe I'm concerned about is on subdivisions. There's a default approval on subdivisions, decking the trigger. On site plan, special use permit, it still says 62 days, but there's no default approval. And so if they want to take us to court to sue us, to compel us to act, usually most applicants are willing to work with you, uh, up to a point. Uh, there are also some timeframes, uh, you get a telecommunications, uh, request at some point. Those, there's federal laws and time limits there, but, um, you know, maybe one thing to do is to watch your agenda and, you know, some boards start bumping into having a second meeting a month if your agenda and schedule is fully, end up having to have another night to keep, keep things moving.
We used to do that.
Yeah, we used to.
But the, the thing about that is that if it's a, if you schedule it as a workshop, you can't take action on it. You actually have to have two meetings scheduled a month and then cancel the second one if you're not going to use it for an actual meeting.
Right.
Well, that's easy enough to do.
I mean, you don't have to schedule it as a workshop, just schedule an additional meeting.
Bylaws, the workshop, the scheduling of another meeting, the only other meeting you can have without, I mean, bylaws, is to set down a workshop where you don't, because you're not supposed to take action for a workshop.
Well, why, well, in the organizational meeting, can't we set, say there are going to be two planning board meetings?
You can, absolutely. Absolutely.
Because that's, that's a nice fact.
Every month.
Fall off.
Right. But it depends on what, how late it gets on the first meeting.
I mean, that's a self, that's a feeling. And there will be two planning board meetings a month very quickly. Schedule two.
That's a problem.
And I'm not going to come to a week. I don't know about you guys. I'd rather stay another 45 minutes and get a lot.
Yeah, I'm with you. I'm believing. I, like I said, um, you know, I, I understand there's, there's, there's debate and pros and cons about moving the time. I understand that.
Do we have to hear applications that are complete?
Oh, yeah, you've got to, you've got to hear the ones that are making the decision.
If the applicant comes in with an incomplete application, can we hand them back their application and say, "You're deficient here, here, here. Come back to us when your application is complete"?
At the meeting, you can do that.
Yeah.
Keep in mind, the way this is supposed to work, and I don't see, doesn't seem to be working at the moment, is applications actually are supposed to go to the building inspector first. He's the one that says whether they're complete enough.
Right.
That's part of the timing.
Right. We don't have new application, do we have, I mean, the Hartwood, I know that, well, that's Hartwood law, yes. And, and we're aware of that. And they have, the, the three applications, the large applications that are in front of us now have gone through the planning, have gone through the building inspector.
Correct.
Correct. So, well...
I have just a question about the time change.
Yeah.
I mean, if two people, two members routinely can't make the 7:00, I mean, that's, I, I, am I, am I mistaking what?
For me, it's less so than, I mean...
Right, but let's say every other meeting you'd have a problem. I mean, I'm just for discussion. So you've got always a situation where it's meaningless because, or we'll always have to have the alternate, uh, to make a quorum becomes more difficult.
Right.
So you'd have to have, maybe we need another alternate under them.
Well, the, the law allows for three alternates. I haven't been reading the...
That's why I, I say that, because you, you don't want to be in this weird position where you, you're, we're sitting around until 7:30 until Josh shows up.
Yeah, no, I agree, yeah.
So, so it's a problem.
What's that, Jim?
Just, just to get to what Warren was saying, uh, and what Mr. Gordon was saying. We need to be careful because the way the law actually reads is the alternate can be used for only certain things. Recusals.
Or, or absence.
It says absentee.
No, that's, that's the thing.
It's a little quirky in the...
Wow.
In what was, in our law or...
We have definitely no...
Or, or town, town law.
And in the, the code, your code.
The code, as I recall. I remember looking at this for the town board workshop meeting.
Can you, can you respond to, uh, what, um, the, um, public, um, brought up tonight, uh, tomorrow?
That you guys are all illegal. I wouldn't respond to that.
No, respond to me.
Oh, I'm not responding to that.
Every year since, anyone to remember, the town board has appointed planning board members and you've acted, whether it was...
Under oath, too.
Under oath, you know, for dozens or 20 decades. And so I think it's a real specious argument to say because someone says that there's not an enabling thing in the books that they could find and somehow that you're illegally constituting it. It's just not...
I wouldn't pay the attorney's fee. Oh, yes, there is.
But the structure of town government, according to his argument, doesn't exist because...
It was the first resolution formed in the town board.
Pardon me?
Where, where's the piece of paper showing the town board is...
It's state law that, that creates the structure of three boards.
Well, no, the, the state laws, the town board can...
10 o'clock, guys. 10 o'clock.
Two minutes.
10 o'clock.
Alright, so, uh...
I don't know where someone came up with this.
Without further ado, I'd like to wish everybody a happy holidays, um, happy new year, um, appreciate your time.
So, was, were you saying the 7:30 or not?
One of the things you should know is that you are getting a raise at the first of the year and we're going to, I understand, uh, what Mary Beth told us tonight. We're going to $50 per evening. So, hanging there, guys, and, uh...
I'm getting a day break.
We didn't, we, our figure was... We haven't made, uh, we haven't come to a final decision on the 7:00, 7:30 discussion, alright, we need to further discuss it.
Oh, we spoke with Mary Beth. We could have our joint meeting with all the boards. She is hoping to get some written comments from people. She's gotten very, very few. So she said, "If you have any, please get them into..."
I was just talking to Al today and I was saying we're going to go through to see if we had anything and, uh... I know I marked up the bylaws and as well as that law regarding the planning board. It's our marking those up.